For Monday, January 24th. Thanks, everybody for coming. I'm going to review the agenda quickly. We're going to say the pledge, have roll call, review the agenda, which I'll do right now. We will have an invitation for public comment as we do at the top of all of our meetings. We'll have a president's report and superintendent's report. We get to do some student recognition tonight. We're very happy to see we've got a full house. The consent vote agenda includes all the things that we've talked about in committee. So the consent means that we will vote on them all at once. We'll have reports from our property and personnel, PNP property.
Programs.
Thank you, programs, programs and personnel, as well as report from our facility and finance committee. Report, if any, from the IASB and CEDOL. We will discuss future agenda items. And then we have canceled the executive session that we have on the agenda. We do not have any matters to update the board right now for collective negotiating matters. So we will go right from number eight to number 11. So if I could ask everybody to stand for the pledge. The flag is behind me. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Donal Kokarny.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Okay, we know everybody, but Casey is here. Casey had a canceled flight and will try to join us possibly late, but possibly not at all. So if Casey does not make it, I've asked our board secretary, Don Carmichael, to take us through the PNP agenda tonight.
F and F.
Sorry, F and F. I'm going to get those straight. Okay, so we are going to start off with an invitation for public comment. Each speaker needs to just identify themselves, first and last name. And I ask everybody to respect a three-minute time limit. I will let you know when you approach that time. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board? Going once. Okay, seeing none. Do we have any email public comments? Okay, so we will go right into the president's report. I'm very excited to ask Dr. Gilliam to start us off with student recognition.
Good evening, everyone. John Gilliam, the principal of Vernon Hills High School. Wonderful to have everybody here tonight. Tonight, we have the pleasure to honor some of our fine and performing arts students. Every month, or not every month, but many months, we get the opportunity to recognize kids for the great things that they do, the recognitions that they've earned in state-level competitions. We've had several athletic groups join us over the last few months. So it's really good to get a little recognition for our fine and performing arts students as well. I think our guys are going to do a tag team. So I'm going to introduce Drew Russell. Drew is the Fine and Performing Arts Department Supervisor here at Vernon Hills High School. And I'll just introduce Dustin Helvey also. Dustin is the same role at Libertyville High School. So let's give these two guys a hand and they're going to introduce their kids.
Audience clapping.
Good evening. Thank you for welcoming us, welcoming us here tonight. We have two sets of recognitions we're going to give tonight. The first one is the Illinois High School Theater Festival. And for those of you who don't know, the Theater Festival is the oldest non-competitive theater festival in the nation. It brings together over 4,000 students every year to participate in workshops, showcase performances, as well as college and university auditions. The highlight of the weekend is the All-State Production. Unfortunately, this year, the festival was canceled due to COVID spike. So as the old saying goes, the show must go on. The All-State Production of Cabaret did get to have one performance at Bowling Brook High School with a very enthusiastic audience. And we have two District 128 students that we would like to recognize. The one from Libertyville High School is Bella Perkins.
Audience clapping.
Also have one student from Vernon Hills High School. And this student, we're recognizing for All-State Theater, but let me tell you, you can't walk into our school after 3:30 PM and not see him doing something. Star and Wind Ensemble, really responsible, along with Brandon, for many of the production back sort of behind-the-stage things that happened at Vernon Hills High School. Super, super, super valuable fine arts kid, Josh Kalanowski.
Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken.
I'm here for you.
Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken.
So next up, we're going to recognize some students for All-State Music. And so this is really, is really a huge honor for kids to be able to do this. There's a lot of times when I feel super lucky to work with the teachers that we have in the Fine Arts Department at Vernon Hills. I watch these performances and I'm just in awe. They make, they make us look really good very often. But this All-State Music thing is, is one of those, it's one of those places where it's like, we don't have a whole lot to do with them getting to this level. You know, we try to encourage them, but this is about parents supporting the students and, and taking lessons and enjoying music early on, and kids dedicating themselves to hundreds, thousands of hours of practicing. And it's really, it's really about them. So with that, I'll just explain a little bit about what All-State Music is. All-State Music is essentially the only thing we have here in the state of Illinois where we're able to identify the best musicians that, that exist here. And it starts with a district audition. And the district audition is basically the northern suburbs up here where students go. And like the top 5% of those students are selected for the district ensemble. If you know, if you don't know a ton about this area and music, getting selected in this particular area as a, as one of the top musicians is insane. There are so many good musicians just in this area. So not only is it difficult to be selected as one of the all-district musicians, but then also to be selected from that pool as an all-state musician, you have to kind of be the top 5% of that 5%. So Matt, I'm a fine arts guy, somebody can do the math. It's, it's a very small percentage of kids who, who are selected to do that. And, and so if you've, if you've seen any of our senior solo nights, or if you've seen any of these events where we feature some of our students, you know the level that these guys are performing at is unbelievable. And in fact, as the kids would say, it's dumb. It's like, not even right. So thank you, I, you guys, thank you for blessing us with your talent. It's unbelievable what you've done. And to the parents, thank you for supporting them in that and sharing them with us. All right, enough of me talking. I'll call you up one by one and we'll do the certificates after because there's so many. All right, Adam Brand. Ailee Kim. Noah Kim. John Lee. Aeta. Can be seen all over the Fine Arts Department. Anika Urbanas.
And I will just echo everything Drew had said. In addition to that, we will leave on Wednesday with our All-State Musicians, both Vernon Hills and Libertyville, head down to Peoria for two full days of rehearsal with a guest conductor and other students from across the state, and then perform a concert at the Peoria Civic Center on Saturday afternoon. And then we have four students from Libertyville High School, Nick Anderson. Chloe Chan. And Johnson. Art Two.
Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken.
Go all the way up.
Parents, you can jump over and take a picture. Don't be shy.
Photographs being taken. 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 Photographs being taken.
Okay. Is that everything for student recognition? Okay, super. So the next item is an educational presentation. I had noticed that there was something really interesting and innovative going on at LHS. There's something called Wildcats Will that gets posted pretty frequently on the Instagram account for LHS. And it looked like they were doing some really neat things around leadership. So I called Dr. Kane and said, hey, could you just tell me what this is? And he said, how about even better, why don't you come by? We'll tell you all about it. I'll pull in the people who have created this. We'll talk about it. And I thought, even better, how about we all get to hear about it? So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. K and he's going to introduce his team and this very innovative leadership initiative.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. We are excited to be here to talk about our students and the work that they are engaged in. I know that some of the same programs happen at Vernon Hills as well. And we're happy to talk about the ways that we build and develop our student leaders. So in my job tonight is just to kind of set the table for these guys and provide you a little context. And we know as a community and as a, as a team of professionals at the school that we value and believe that high school is a place for our students to demonstrate leadership skills as they emerge as young adults and as they grow as students. We want to increasingly provide them more opportunities to lead. We also know that when students are the leaders of initiatives and programs, we get a much greater impact and there's much greater engagement from their peers and a much greater positive impact on the school, culture and community. We know that traditional athletics and arts programs, like we've seen tonight, have leadership roles embedded in them, like team captains and section leaders, directors. Those roles still exist and continue to offer leadership opportunities. But we don't want leadership to be a scarcity in our school. And while there might only be one or two formal leadership roles on a team or within a performance group, we were thinking about how can we expand? Because we might have 15 students on a team who could demonstrate leadership while there might only be one positive or one formal role. So we were thinking about how do we expand that so that the leadership experiences are not in scarce supply? And as we thought about this, we realized as a staff that for as much as we value leadership and as much as we encourage our students to really lean into and go and pursue leadership roles, we didn't have a way to formally and explicitly teach our students how to be leaders and what it means to be a leader and what skills a leader has and what values and characteristics a leader demonstrates. And we expect more from our leaders. When kids step into these roles, we hold them accountable to higher standards because we believe that our leaders represent our community. They represent our school. They also are role models for younger students. And so we said, hey, if we're going to hold our students accountable for these leadership opportunities and these leadership roles, and if we're going to ask them to pursue these things, we really need to spend some time thinking about how we develop them as leaders. So the programs that you're going to hear tonight are ones that encompass athletics, but also the activities and our prevention and wellness program. And through these different programs, we are able from freshman year through senior year to offer LHS students opportunities to come learn about leadership, develop their leadership skills, practice some of their leadership skills so that as they go through our system, when they become juniors and seniors and some of those formal leadership roles are available to them, they not only are eager to move into those, but they've been practicing and developing kind of their leadership mindset along the way. We're very proud of the students that you're going to see tonight. There, the adults are going to talk to you in big picture about what the programs are. And then the students are going to share with you how these programs have impacted them throughout their journey at LHS. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Ms. Jennifer Ulix, who is our Director of Student Activities. And she is going to talk about some leadership development programs in the activities world and in prevention and wellness.
Good evening and thank you so much for giving us your attention tonight. We're super excited to be able to share with you sort of the evolution of leadership as, as we see it at Libertyville High School. And the first one I want to talk about is our Leadership Academy. And this is a program designed for our freshmen and our sophomore students. And it's really designed to, for our students to explore just who they are and what kind of leader they want to become. So we do a lot of exploring of values and the things that, sort of what, what is their vision over the next four years? It's really that, that ground level of exploration. And then as we, as, as we look at our freshman transition program, we, we, we talk a lot about how awesome our transition program is for our freshmen, but it is incredibly amazing for our junior and senior leaders, of which we have about 130 of them. And looking back over the last 12 years that we've had the program, I don't think we ever realized how amazing the leadership opportunity would have been for our leaders. And so we work with our leaders over the summer to train them over several days of intense training. And then they get training throughout the semester once a week to continue to develop connections with our freshmen and to really develop that mentorship and carry out those values that we want our Wildcats to have at Libertyville. Then we segue to our, the LHS Green Dot Program. And for those of you who are not familiar with our program, this is a school-wide strategy that's really designed to impact school culture in a positive way. It's designed to decrease what we call interpersonal-based violence, which would encompass bullying, sexual assault and dating violence. And throughout this platform, we have an opportunity, opportunity to build leadership with our junior and senior students. There are monthly bystander trainings that we put our students through. And they take what they learn and then they're advocates for our building and spreading that positive school culture. So we're super proud of the work that our students have done in our LHS Green Dot Program. Senior Wellness Leaders, this really falls under the purview of Dr. Nelson, who is our Prevention and Wellness Coordinator. She works with our wellness leaders on many things as it relates to wellness. For example, mental health, choosing a healthy lifestyle and what does that look like? Healthy relationships. In addition to all of those other topics that our seniors and our juniors feel are important that the rest of the student body need to learn about. So Dr. Nelson works very closely with our senior wellness leaders to build awareness and programming that's delivered to the rest of our student body throughout the year. I think one of the coolest things that we see as adults and educators in our building is when our fine students are inspired and they, they have an idea and they want to make that idea come to life somehow. And the Wildcat Summit is a perfect example of what happens when our leaders are, I guess, mentored and we, we provide them with all of the opportunities to learn. And then they're inspired with an idea and they create that idea and execute that idea. And Wildcat Summit is that example. And Paige, Paige Black, I'm sorry, Paige, is going to talk a little bit about this idea and how this came to life. And then we will introduce the rest of our LHS students after Paige shares her story. Thanks, Paige.
My name is Paige Black and I'm a senior this year at LHS. And my involvement with wellness began with my decision to participate in the Freshman Leadership Academy. And since then, I've seen our programs grow into the foundation of our culture at LHS. And such programs include our Green Dot Bullying and Violence Prevention Programs, our Red and Yellow Ribbon Week Awareness Weeks. And these shine a light on healthy bodies and minds. And all of these ideas are pieces that make up our Life of a Wildcat Initiative. And when COVID hit, we had to really reimagine how to use our voices in order to maintain as well as expand upon all of the progress that we had already made as student leaders. And COVID had really taken a toll on many students' wellness. And it became increasingly important to spread our messages of healthy minds, bodies and relationships. And this need for connection brought about the culmination of all of our ideas and efforts. And in February of last year, after weeks of planning by junior and senior leaders, LHS held its first-ever Wildcat Summit Leadership Conference. And at this conference, students partook in activities and student-led conversations on the topics of healthy minds, bodies, relationships and discourse. And senior leaders opened up about their own experiences and struggles within all of these topics. And this really inspired myself and I know countless other students to get more involved with Life of a Wildcat. And today, we have a foundation of 99 senior wellness leaders. And it's our job to guide the rest of the student body throughout their own wellness journeys. And then one of the most impactful outcomes of Wildcat Summit is our increased participation in a newfound club that was founded last year called Wildcats Rise. And through this club and our many other outlets, we will continue to spread the message of wellness. And I know that I speak for all of us when I say that I will take the lessons and skills that I've learned within all of these aspects and I will cherish the friendships that I've made in these groups for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Hey, I would like to introduce Grace Moore. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Moore and I'm also a senior at LHS. I have always been super involved within the school, but after the pandemic hit, I truly realized the importance of extracurriculars and being a leader within my community. My first experience this year as a leader was attending an Illinois Human Performance Project Conference during the summer. I was given this opportunity as I was selected as a senior wellness leader this year. So through meeting with various schools at this conference, I was able to paint a picture of how I wanted this year to go. I wanted to spread messages of Green Dot, a bullying, a bullying prevention program, as well as messages of wellness. The picture I had painted in my head came to life through many different activities. We planned Green Dot Days in which the school would wear all green and the message was widely spread. We did similar things with Yellow Ribbon Week and Red Ribbon Week, planning various fun activities engaging the entire student body. While these were all things that were part of my vision, my main focus this year has been to use my passion of videography to further spread Green Dot and wellness messages, as well as encourage participation schoolwide. Many of my videos showcase all types of students within LHS, encouraging inclusivity. It also pushes kids towards participating in wellness and Green Dot Days, since it is made clear to them that anyone is able to do so. What I love about LHS is that within our wellness club, Life of a Wildcat and Green Dot, there is not one definition of a leader. Being behind the scenes making videos has proven to me that I am able to be involved in any way that I want. And I am so grateful that LHS has offered me to do so.
Please help me welcome Patrick Akers. Come on up, Patrick.
Today, I will be kind of talking about our Link Crew Freshman Mentor Program. I was selected as a junior and senior to do it. And it has been a phenomenal experience. We, it gives definitely a very safe and almost in a way gives us a backbone to kind of try out leadership and lead a group of freshmen. Though we do get free rein over a lot of the stuff we get to do. We do have a set curriculum and plenty of training, which has been awesome. And so we never feel unprepared. But the, I guess, creative freedom that we get on how we're going to involve the freshmen of the school into the school and just the simple fact of kind of breaking away from just you're going to school with your freshman friends versus you're really part of the school. You have seniors recognize you day to day. And making it a lot more of a community has really kind of pushed forward the life of a wildcat. It's, it's really a lifestyle. I could personally say that any of my co-leaders have been amazingly responsible through high school and having such a, a like healthy lifestyle and pushing that for everyone has been huge. And not just having that lifestyle, but also this is our future of all these programs. So having a really strong backbone and having a really strong foundation for these kids has been huge. So thank you very much.
Okay, Cole Collins, come on up.
So hi, guys. I'm Cole Collins. I'm a senior at LHS. So I'm going to talk about Green Dot a little bit for you guys. So for me personally, my first experience with leadership at the school was through the Freshman Leadership Program, which Mrs. Ulix talked about. From there on out, I really wanted to get involved in the school. COVID hit sophomore year and really it was tough for me to really get involved. Junior year came around, I talked to Dr. Nelson, one of the other leaders at our school. And I asked, how could I get involved? One of the things she gave me was Green Dot. For me, I thought this was a perfect opportunity, so I decided to join. So pulled up to the event and I knew right then and there it was going to be a great step for my leadership. At that point, you get in a group with a bunch of people who have the same mindset as you and it just active participation the whole time. Really talking about the prevention of bullying, dating violence, sexual assault, but even more than that, just the healthy lifestyle at LHS. I think one word to really bring it all together was culture. I think everyone talks about it at our school. And I think this is the main thing that really breeds it. Coming back from COVID, a lot of the freshmen sophomore really didn't know what our school is about. And I think a lot of our senior leaders really want to harp on the fact that it's a healthy lifestyle at our school and we want them to feel included as well. And I think for leadership, it was a big step, especially from our senior program, to really step up as a community together to help them. And not even at our school, a lot of it is extracurricular activities. So I know for sports outside of school, a lot of the seniors have stepped up and found ways to really bring that healthy lifestyle outside of their life.
Thank you guys so very much for sharing your stories and how leadership has impacted you personally. At this time, that is our overview of some things that fall under activities, prevention and wellness. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. John Woods, who is the LHS Athletic Director, to talk to you about Wildcats Will. Come on, John.
I was telling them earlier when I got here, I don't do well behind podium. So if I branch out and start freestyling, you'll have to forgive me. Wildcats Will, trying to think how to, how to frame this in three minutes or so, trying to be respectful and mindful of everybody's time. Wildcats Will, if you've seen it on our social media platform, whether it's Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, MySpace was around, I'm positive we would be there too. But what we want to do is, is promote the healthy lifestyle that our kids are talking about. When you think about Wildcats Will, we think about will as both a verb and a noun. So will, we're talking about, the verb is taking action. And then we want to make sure that we teach the skills to our kids and, and teach them how to demonstrate the actions, the behaviors that we expect. And then as, as a, as a noun, we're talking about And then as, as a, as a noun, we're talking about that will, that determination, the wildcat determination. And then of course, we want to teach skills and strategies on how to enhance determination in addition to aligning with the daring mission and, and thinking about resilience uh, in, in addition to happier, healthier, higher performing and, and the entire District 128 mission. So when we think about, this is probably what you saw on social media. This might be one of about four or five different versions that we have. But if you notice, um, we meet at, at seven forty-five every Friday morning, except last Friday, I was at the district office. But Coach Budge and I um, started it or got together this year. We've been doing this three years. Coach Budge and I got together this year. Um, he was very interested in what we're doing and wanted to jump in and certainly grateful uh, for his um, willingness to lock arms and teach our kids. So if we, if we look at the next slide, think about if, if you, if you were an athlete, if, if you've ever been to an athletic outing or, or possibly anything that you've ever been around adults and kids where if you've ever heard any of these two statements, be a leader or you need to be more mentally tough. And then if you think about that, does, do those statements come with instructions? So by telling somebody to be a leader, we look at it like, that's like telling me to be seven feet tall. Well, it's just not gonna hap- actually even with instructions, that's not gonna happen. So bad example, be a leader, be more mentally tough. What we want to do is make sure that we're teaching our kids not only the skills, the strategies, we also want to teach them a better understanding of what that means when they hear those statements. So when we think about our curriculum with Wildcats Will, I'm going to share our ten pillars that we reference. So when we're talking about Wildcats Will in our curriculum, some people say, hey, John, what's, what are you guys teaching? So when you look at our ten pillars, um, our focus, so we don't just, it's not a sit and get situation all the time, but we want to do is supplement these ten pillars. But these are the foundation of what we teach our kids. So pillar number one, elite mindset. Pillar two, we talk about motivation and commitment. And then we get into focus and awareness, self-control and discipline, and I won't read them all to you. But what we do also is when kids leave at eight thirty, we want to make sure that they leave with at least one strategy that they can then use, whether it's in practice or uh, whenever they're training or in competition or all of the above. And the ultimate goal is happier, healthier, higher performing kids that live the life of a wildcat and of course demonstrate that Wildcats Will in everything that we do. Now I'm going to ask Coach Budge to come up and speak a little bit about another component of our curriculum, and that is the Twin Thieves.
Everyone, um, so in, in, uh, trying to keep the students, you know, uh, aimed at uh, healthy, being healthier, higher performing Wildcats, we know there are some things that hold them back. And these are two of the things that, just thinking back in my life and everything, you know, I didn't have social media growing up and I know that's one of the big things in uh, in the Twin Thieves. And that's the fear of failure and the fear of judgment. Those are two of the things that hold our students back from being the best that they're capable of being. So we are very intentional in talking about the fear of failure and the fear of judgment and how to combat them. And one of the ways that we combat them is um, we talk about culture, you know, and that's one of the ten pillars that uh, Mr. Woods had up there. And when we talk about culture, again, we want to be intentional about it. We don't want to say, we want to have great cultures in your programs. What does that mean? You know, we hear it so much nowadays, it's cliche and probably rightfully so because, because it is so important. But a part of a culture that we want to uh, discuss with our student, our students is that it comes down to common values. That's the first thing, common values within your program. Uh, the next thing is common language, like things that you talk about, like one of the examples that we had brought up when we did a peer deck activity to just discuss some of the things that happened in the programs is, you know, something like when a bad play maybe happens in a competition is flush it, like move on to the next play. Having those common language and being intentional about teaching it to every player in that particular program. And then the last thing is common qualities, customs, um, which really comes down to common behaviors. What are our common behaviors? What is behavior above the line and below the line that go in line with our core values? So those are some of the things that, just giving you an overview, but we really want to hand it over to Jack and Maggie to talk about um, their experiences in Wildcat Will. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Maggie.
Uh, hello, everyone. I'm Maggie Forkner and I am a junior at LHS. So I remember last year I decided to join Wildcats Will. Mr. Woods sent me an email and asked if I wanted to join. And I'll be completely honest, uh, last year I was fully remote because of COVID. And I remember I lost a lot of motivation uh, to do things in my life because of all the restrictions that were put on us. But when this email came around, I decided that it would be a good thing to try it out. And I would say that it has changed my life in a lot of ways, not only athletically, but also academically and just in life in general. So I'm just going to talk about how I've implemented it into my tennis career, since that's uh, more recent. So I've learned that I need to focus on the three keys and just telling myself three important things during matches to refocus my mind and to not overthink. These things that I tell myself sometimes are to move my feet, to watch the ball, and to be a tiger. I have also learned to focus on things that will help me succeed and to not focus on things that are out of my control or that will just make me lose my focus. I have also learned that is very important to trust the process and that I just need to understand that there will be ups and downs, but I have to trust my training and to continue improving and growing. Honestly, without Wildcats Will, I have no idea where I would be today. I recently went to Mr. Woods because I was having a little bit of trouble. I was in a little bit of a tennis slump. And so I went to him and I asked him, hey, can you help me out? I'm having a little bit of uh, trouble with tennis. And he referred me back to a lot of what I learned in Wildcats Will. And then later that weekend, I went out to a tournament and I performed amazingly. So uh, take it from me, Wildcats Will definitely works and it just breeds, it breeds a winner mindset. And the last thing I'm going to say, who will?
Uh, good evening. My name is Jack Bonamart. I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. Um, I've been in Wildcats Will for about three years now. To some, Wildcats Will might just be another club listed at LHS. But for me and many others, it has changed our lives many different ways for the better. For those who don't know, Wildcats Will give students and athletes the opportunity to achieve peak performance and become a better leader on and off the field. This year, I've been given some big roles at LHS. Wildcats Will has made me a better leader by teaching me how to lead myself before I lead others. It also teaches me, it's not just what we do, it's how and why we do it. And that is what distinguishes us as Wildcats. Ten pillars of excellence, something that has been a core value of Wildcats Will. It has truly taught me that everything we do, big or small, has a purpose. In reality, sports and life is almost a hundred percent mental. We have this saying at Wildcats Will, where our mind goes, our energy flows. If you think about it, our thoughts influence our actions and our actions influence our thoughts. Fourteen minutes and twenty-four seconds, one percent of our day. If we focus on something to strengthen our mind to get that one percent better every day, it will open so many new doors of possibilities. The two main things that stop us from achieving things in our life are fear of failure and fear of judgment from others. This year, I've learned how to strengthen my mind to become the best version of myself. I used to play baseball up until very recently. Over the summer, I had a back injury that unfortunately ended my baseball career. Although it was very hard at first, really taking in the message of Wildcats Will this year has shown me, even if I'm not an athlete anymore, I can still use the peak performance and leadership skills that I've learned on a daily basis. Even though I cannot win a physical baseball trophy anymore, doesn't, that doesn't mean I can't be a champion. I, I can still choose to be the best version of myself every day because that's what being a champion is all about. In our life, we may not always able to be an athlete. However, we can always decide to be a champion every single day. Being a champion does not mean just winning a trophy. It means getting one percent better every day. It's having that elite mindset. It's being focused. It is the ten pillars of excellence. For me, routines and habits, pillar number seven, has had the most impact on me this school year. In my opinion, all the other pillars are able to happen when you have routines and habits. One of my favorite things that we've talked about this year during Wildcats Will is starting our daily record. When I wake up and don't hit the snooze button, boom, one and O on the day. I make my bed, boom, two and O. I brush my teeth, three and O, and so on and so on. Everyone's routine in the morning differs, but keeping the same routine and habits allows you to reach a winning record every day. The reason why we do this, that is so important, is that when you show up to school, practice, work, six and O, seven and O, and something doesn't go right, you can become six and one, seven and one. Whatever that number is, maintaining these routines and habits every day allows you to show up and overcome obstacles and keep that winning record. Whether school board member, teacher, athlete, or student, we've all faced adversity in life. Wildcats Will has shown me how to overcome adversity and has given me the pathway to be my best self. Today, I hope to have given you all a glimpse into my experience as Wildcats Will and how it has shaped me into the person I am today. For me, I believe in Wildcats Will because I know what it has done for me and I know the impact it can have on others. Thank you.
I think my score is, I think I'm two and seventeen today, Jack, so I need a little help. We really appreciate your attention. We're going to take any questions that you have, whether that's for uh, our adults or for any of our students who are here.
Anybody have any questions? I had a question for Grace. Where are the videos that you make? Where, where, how are those distributed? Where are those?
Yeah, so we have uh, these things called Wake Up Wildcats. It's kind of uh, Student Council came up with the idea, but you can send in videos through the announcements and they're played to the whole school. So I make those and I kind of take, these guys have probably all been in some of my videos. Um, and I just take a bunch of kids and we film. I've done a Yellow Ribbon Week video, a Green Dot video. I've done a ton for Student Council. I've done some for athletics and stuff. But yeah, they're also, some of them might be posted on the Student Council Instagram for LHS and the Life of a Wildcat Instagram. You can find them there too.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Well, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you all coming out and being willing to spend your time talking about the great things that you're doing. Dr. K, keep up the great work. And uh, thanks for your willingness to uh, to indulge us in, in this wonderful work that you're doing around leadership.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Well done.
Um, and before we move on to the student school board uh, reports, uh, student school board representative reports, I didn't have a chance before the max mass accident to say that you're, you're welcome to leave when we are done with this for, for our guests that are here for recognition. I'm sorry that um, while the music directors were here, that I didn't get a chance to say how proud we are of the fine arts programs at both schools. And if you wouldn't mind passing that along, um, I think all of us have had the chance to experience the incredible talent that um, is in our finance, finance departments. It is something that we value and um, the, the programs and the students and the teachers all deserve so much respect. What they're doing is just, the quality of the work, um, the performances are just, they're incredibly impressive. And I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to say that while they were here.
Yeah, we'll pass that along. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, great. So um, let's get uh, rolling with our student school board representative reports.
Okay, um, many winter sports are winding down with their contests and are now approaching the postseason. The dance team competed at sectionals this past Saturday, receiving a second place finish. The team is traveling down to the state tournament this Friday. Cheer placed sixth at their friend competition as well as fourth at conference and have their sectional competition this Saturday. They also had a very successful clinic for future cats at the basketball game Friday. Uh, the wrestling and boys swim teams, both were briefly shut down due to COVID cases, but they are back competing in contests. Talking to a member of the wrestling team, it was difficult to take a break in the peak of their season. However, all the coaches and athletes were willing to keep working hard on their own and they believe the break didn't hurt them as a team or as a program. The Libertyville Esports Team finished their fall season ranked fourth in the entire country. They also qualified for the national championships in which eight teams in the country qualify. Congratulations to them. The Omicron strain of the coronavirus has had an effect on sports this past, past month or two. Many players and coaches were either exposed or tested positive, affecting lineups or team rosters. Teams have had to become more flexible and adjust to these changes. And overall, from what I've heard, they have been really successful. Talking to some of the athletes who tested positive, they felt a bit separated from the rest of their team and sometimes felt guilty for letting their team down. However, overall, having the virus has felt less isolating than it has in previous months because it feels like many more people are experiencing the same situation. At Libertyville, we've adjusted to the new five-day quarantine without COVID symptoms in athletics, so that has provided less of a strain on athletes and teams as they adjust. Students overall appreciate the changing guidelines and feel like it's beneficial to them as students and as athletes. Uh, back in the first semester, Libertyville hosted two Performance Academy sessions with John Underwood, who founded the Life of an Athlete Human Performance Project. Both sessions were about an hour during the school day, where students listened to Mr. Underwood speak on Zoom all the way from Russia. The first session focused on central nervous system readiness and the second on the importance of sleep and recovery in athletics. Mostly seniors attended from a variety of different sports and everyone I talked to found the sessions very useful. It was an opportunity to learn information about how to improve your athletic performance outside of actual training and we could bring the information back to each of our respective teams. I learned a lot of fascinating information about how lack of, a lack of sleep contributes not just to tiredness, but also to potential injury and inefficient training. It was a really amazing opportunity that we were offered to be able to learn from and ask questions to Mr. Underwood, who is an expert in sports science. At this point in the year, many seniors at Libertyville have received acceptance, acceptances to some of the schools they applied to and now have to start thinking about scholarships, either from LHS or from their potential colleges. Libertyville offers a wide range of scholarships that students can apply for, either for a specific sport, talent, the middle school you went to, as well as scholarships anyone can apply to. Generally, most of the students I know are feeling a bit drained because they just finished writing their college applications and now they feel like they have to write even more essays for these scholarships. However, students are really grateful for the opportunity that Libertyville gives us to receive scholarships, which will help immensely in the future.
Hello, um, I'm making up for John since he wasn't able to make it. So Libertyville students and staff had a feeling of uncertainty as the date to return from winter break approached. They were unsure a school would return in person with COVID cases increasing. While many students were missing, the buzz from school was a relief that we didn't have to return to the days of Zoom. I think being back at school is a good motivation for students looking forward to the second semester ahead. Lots of students have been buzzing about turnabout, even though it seems like a long way away. Also, they're excited about new events starting up for the semester, starting with the Jazz Festival, speaking of our amazing fine arts, which was on January nineteenth. Part of LHS's culture is taking great appreciation to extracurriculars that our school offers, such as sports, clubs, and in this case, our amazing fine arts. Secondly, the Science Olympiad had regionals on January twenty-second, where they showcased all the efforts they had put into their many meetings. I have a few friends that are in this club and they really put in time to um, compete at these regionals that they have and the competitions that they have ahead. Unfortunately, they are still awaiting the results from this competition, but I'm sure that they will come out positive. Even though successful academics within classes are very noticeable at LHS, seeing students go the extra mile within their knowledge in extracurricular clubs is extremely impressive. Adding to the good news, the freshman sophomore play, The Last Illusion, is showing on January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, allowing the underclassmen to display what LHS's theater is all about. Showing every grade level skills and talents is part of our inclusive and equity belief at LHS to make sure that every student feels included and seen. The new semester begins, or the new semester, the new semester brings changes to many students as schedules get rearranged and new classes start. Students come back with renewed excitement at a fresh semester. Changes are coming not only to student schedules. Administration decided a address, a pro- to address a problem caused by the new retake policy. Students and staffs alike were struggling to find times to meet up to retake tests and relearn concepts. They had to sacrifice, sacrifice lunches and planning periods in order to make the policy work. Now, starting this Wednesday and everyone for the rest of the year, there will be the new flex period that allows a designated time for students to meet with teachers. The flex period will push back to the start, push back the start of classes to nine thirty. Students love the idea as they won't have to sacrifice lunch, a break from school, to meet with teachers. And if they don't need to, they now And if they don't need to, they now have a late start to like the old days, which I feel like is very nice. Thank you.
So final exams last semester went really well and all of us students really appreciated the board allowing teachers to be flexible with their finals. Most students that I've talked to only had a few finals, which was really nice. For example, my only final was in calculus and without the schedule, it had to be taken over three days. And at first, I really didn't like the idea of having to take a math test over multiple days, but in the end, it didn't make it as bad as I thought. Because after each day, I was able to go home and review the topics that I knew were a struggle for me and felt more prepared for the next part of the test. Overall, this was a pretty stress-free week for most students. And also to add on to fine arts, for the holiday concert, the high school students got to combine with middle schoolers for the first time. This was beneficial for the middle schoolers because they got the opportunity to play along older students and see how the high school programs are different from the middle school programs. The chamber choir also visited the district board office, sorry, my page is reloading, visited the district board office and had the opportunity to sing for them. Even with the new circumstances with COVID, the choir is still able to do the events from before and reach the same level as before, even though the choir is made up of mostly new students. On January twentieth, during gym periods, all students watched the movie Angst. Although this is not an easy topic to talk about, it's important for our school to recognize that the anxiety that many students deal with. The movie talked about removing the stigma and opening up the conversation around anxiety. It also talks about how people understand and manage their symptoms and when to reach out for help. A lot of students really appreciated that the school showed this movie because anxiety is something that a lot of us deal with and it's nice to know that the school is aware and here to help us. This year before winter break, we had our very first STEAM showcase. This was an opportunity for students to showcase their projects that are part of science, technology, engineering, entrepreneurship, equity, art, and math. I personally got to participate this myself and it was a really cool experience again to present my own project to others and also see the different creative projects that my peers have made. Wu Jin Li, who was a part of the project KIWO Learning, which got first in entrepreneurship, says, "It was so rewarding to be able to show our hard work to judges and get their opinions on how far we've come. I'm so proud of our teamwork and grateful to the STEAM showcase for this opportunity." The showcase received a lot of great feedback from both students and teachers and overall was super successful. Congrats to all the winners for your hard work and innovative projects. With turnabout coming up in about a month, Student Council is busy planning for the dance. All the students are so excited to see what Student Council comes up with and can't wait for a week filled with fun. But with current COVID cases, we are hoping that the dance will stay in person. And on December twenty-second, during eighth period, students had the opportunity to watch the ELS combo class perform our great adventure around the world. Mr. Little and Mrs. Freyko's Intro to Theater class worked with students in the ELS program to create this amazing production. It included songs, dances, and a video about their adventures around the world to places like Ireland. Second semester has scheduled a family consumer science and ELS combination class. We are excited to see what the team produces.
All right. Starting this week, students will have a flex period every Wednesday. So first period will be pushed back to have a period where students who are falling behind or want extra help can come in and receive extra instruction, meet with LST staff, take makeup assignments, or just meet with their teachers. These days will really help the teachers get back on track with all the people missing in person due to COVID. Course selection is underway. Last week, the HHS started course selection for the underclassmen for the 2022-2023 school year. In the four-year, we set up a curriculum fair during lunch periods where students could stop by each booth and ask teachers what classes they can take and any other questions they had. On the twenty-first, during their health or gym class, freshmen were taken to the West Gym to finalize their selection for next year. This process will continue with sophomores this week and juniors will personally set up their meetings with their counselors to talk about their senior year. When coming back from second semester, COVID cases were very high. For all of my classes, I had at least one to four, I think was max, students missing and were on Zoom because of COVID. Due to that fact that more people are on Zoom, some teachers have resorted back to the ways that they were teaching when we went to the hybrid setting last year. Now, when teachers are getting COVID, they're working their hardest and doing an amazing job trying to teach from home while their students are here. And they're trying to make the school setting as normal as possible. Because of the new quarantine guidelines, students can return to in-person classes after five days if they are showing zero symptoms. With cases rising, we've also had to become cautious with larger groups. Our annual eighth-grade orientation has now become virtual and the in-person activity fair has been postponed till April fifth in hopes that cases will be down by then. In addition, the CSL Wrestling Championships were held without spectators to keep the wrestlers healthy heading towards the state tournament. So now we're going to talk about a lot of sports because we have a lot of sports that are doing great. All right, so we have the Palms team this week that placed fifth at sectionals and they are heading down to state this weekend. We have also Cheer, who are our conference champions for the fifth year in a row and are looking forward to another great state run. Our gymnastics girls team is undefeated in the CSL and won the Lake County championship title. Great job, girls. Now for bowling, we have Joseph Neprekowski is a CSL individual conference champ. He also tied for third in the regionals and he's earned his way to the state tournament this weekend. For wrestling, we have Max Agatura, I think that's how you pronounce it, I don't know, but he is the conference champion. He won the conference championship title at the CSL championship and has stretched his record this season to thirty and one. With teams and especially larger teams, like you said, wrestling and swimming and COVID cases, we've had to shut down. For swimming, I'm on the swim and dive team and we had to shut down our Phil Pardon Invitational. And then we would pass that, we'd have three, four days of us being isolated before our cases were down, before we were able to come back. But now we are back. It's very great. It's very great to be back and we're all keeping our masks up and trying to stay safe. So this will, we can prevent anything else like this happening again. Also, even though this is the JV team, I'm gonna shout them out because the swim team is pretty important. The JV team broke five records last Friday against Deerfield. They crushed five pool records and almost got their six, which is out of eleven events, that is amazing. So, yeah. Thank you.
Fantastic. Great job, guys. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for student board reps?
I have a quick comment.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The stress-free week, Tiffany, you said something that has never been said, that that sentence has never been before, I think anywhere in the world, that finals overall was a pretty stress-free week. And I think I would like to underscore that because it took a big group of people to come up with an idea about how to deal with finals during COVID. And moving forward, it seems, if I understand, this could go on forever. This is something that works.
Yeah, I mean, like a lot of students that I talked to, like this year was definitely less stressful than before than having to take like a final for every class. Because like, especially with like the twenty percent weighted normally, like it adds a lot of stress to you. Like if you have like a borderline grade and trying to like decide like, and also like with like the different periods, like you're like, which class should I study for? And like for me, since I only had like one final, it was like a lot less stressful for me. So I could just focus on one class.
Good. Thank you.
I think if I could just add to, just to shout out to teachers, because teachers were sensitive to the new schedule, were sensitive to the semester ending and not having any days kind of to finish off. And I think realized that if they all ended at the same moment with all of their culminating activities, whether they were assessments or projects or or whatever, that they would have created some significant stress and undue for kids. So they worked well together as both interdepartments and across the school to try to kind of create strategies to make it a little more doable for kids at the end of the year. So shout out to the teachers for that for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else want to ask any questions? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Nice job. We're going to move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Herman.
Thank you. We have a lot of additional good news beyond what the students have already shared. First, I'd like to build off of the information about the D128 STEAM showcase. In addition to what was already said, the showcase was organized by Vernon Hills Computer Science Teacher Adam Lukin and Vernon Hills Senior Shayna Weinstein. And it included an opportunity for students to win more than $4,000 worth of prizes. Overall, winners who were part of three or more STEAM categories were Kai Woon Learning, which was Caleb Kim, David Munn, Jackie Liu, Wu Jin Li, Anthony Smikolov, and Timur Arson Tiev, excuse me. Ready, Set, Go Social Emotional Tracker, that was by Shayna Weinstein and Gordish Doda. Cobalt from Lawrence Zhang and Fully Automated GIF Maker from George Huber. In addition, we had first place winners in each of these areas. Science was Emma Zhang. Technology, Jacob Noacki. Engineering, Matthew Ramirez. Entrepreneurship, Andrew Tikunov. Sheerkar Monakanda, Eric Beamer, Jacob Shifrin. Equity was Mia Soto. Art, Hannah Chen. And Math, Dmitry Shore. So congratulations to all the students. Many of us were able to visit either Vernon Hills or Libertyville and the student projects were just amazing. So next, we have LHS Academic Decathlon Team won the suburban regional competition held online Friday, January fourteenth. LHS team members were Sarah Dowden, Charles Hansen, Maya Hoffman, Elias Erizi, Keegan Jasser, and Reina Turchi. The team competes in the state tournament on March fifth. Next, the District 128 Special Olympic Athletes Hannah Kreitch, Joseph Mahler, and Noah Hewitt competed at the Area Snowshoe Competition at Hoffman Estates High School on January eighth, where they received gold medals and qualified for the state Winter Games that will be held February first through third in Galena. They will race in the 100-meter and 50-meter races. LHS Esports Team competed in GS Go or Counter-Strike Global Offensive and finished the fall season ranked fourth in the nation out of more than 400 teams. The team qualified for the eighteen national championships held in December. And the team members are Abraham Quinonas, Aiden Merchant, Cameron Wong, Eric Vu, Hayden Liu, John Murphy, Kyle Lee, and Nicholas Olson. And finally, the District 128 Foundation for Learning will be hosting its third annual 128 Day of Giving on Friday, January twenty-eighth. The annual fundraiser is a day-long Facebook event during which they will announce the 2122 Daring Innovation Grant Recipients. Raise awareness of the foundation programs to enrich and enhance student learning and raise funds to meet the day's goal of $12,800. Prizes will also be awarded. So a lot of good things happening across the district. Next up, we have, if we could put the presentation for the strategic plan update. And I wanted to make sure that keeping the whole board up to date on what's been going on with, there we go. This last Friday, the strategic planning team of staff who volunteered to do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work with data analysis met all day and I wanted to share where we are in this journey. So next slide. One of the things that we reviewed about strategic planning and two of my favorite Einstein quotes really capture innovation, data-driven, and systems thinking that are all a part of strategic planning. One of them is talking about how if I had an hour to solve a problem, fifty-five minutes would be focused on, you know, defining the problem and five percent on the solutions. And we have been spending as a team so much time looking at data, trying to really understand our student needs that the accelerating part of now generating solutions, setting priorities will go really smoothly because the work we've done in gathering the district data profile, it's very, very accomplished. Then the second part is we can't solve a problem using the same thinking that we had when the problem was generated. And that really hit home with a lot of us who are talking about program and process reviews and how to pause and not only look at data, but how we do things and what we might need to learn to do a little differently. So these two quotes really resonated with our work from Friday. Next slide. And this, you can't read from here, but one of the things that I did want to share with the board is the framework for a strategic plan that we're trying to work towards. And we have the two bookends. So the top is the mission. And we have our wonderful daring mission statement that defines why we exist. And then the bottom, you see that's called the district profile and that's the data. The work we've been doing all fall together, what we need to know about our students, what our parents think, how the processes are going as bookends to this. And in the middle will be our priorities and some of the other things. I hope that by the end of this, we do have a one-page roadmap for the public, just how we have that one-page summary of the mission statement that really communicates so well what our purpose is. I see an accompanying document to overview this whole roadmap. Next slide. So I did want to just briefly remind you what the components will be. So again, reinforcing our daring mission and then transitioning that to a vision statement or statements. And this is a description of our preferred future in our key areas. So our key areas as a learning organization are curriculum, instruction, assessment, and the environment. And so that's really what we'll be focusing on in the month of February. We also will be identifying some foundational strategies and those are some things that might not necessarily be goal areas or priorities, but rather things that permeate across, almost like cross-cutting concepts. Some districts have identified things as relationships or data-driven decision-making or some other things that maybe aren't a definable goal, but something that really is going to be five, ten, twenty, you're always going to be working on that. Another area is the shared beliefs and values and that really is us making sure that we're clear on what's going to guide our behaviors. Because an action plan is doing the work and there are things that you can have your destination set and you can have measures. But what are the things that are going to guide our decision-making along the way? Finally, our goals will be identified and from three to four, hopefully not more than that, because again, if we've identified too many priorities, then nothing really is a priority. The second to last one is the strategic delimeters and I think those are almost as important as the goals you identify. It's the things that you're not going to do that might detract you from focusing on your mission, vision, and goals. And then finally, again, our district profile, which is ninety-nine percent complete. So those are the things that I hope we are able to generate by the end of this school year. Next slide. So last fall, I shared with you a calendar and based on COVID and some other things, we needed to make some adjustments, especially with when we were getting together with the community. So you'll see on there, the top line was our meeting last Friday. Our next event will be our Teacher In Service Day on February twenty-first. We'll have an opportunity for all staff members in the district to participate in some components of what I talked about, the visioning and helping with input in the shared beliefs and values. Then following that, we want to expand that opportunity and hold a stakeholder group meeting on, I think it is March third, and that would be the first evening where we would be inviting students, parents, and other community members, maybe people from the village board, from some of our feeder school board members, other people to help us answer some of the questions we talked about. Then we will Then we will, um, have another strategic planning committee meeting, the 50 volunteers who've been working on this. Then we will bring it back to again, thinking about the different layers of work. So it, at the second meeting, we'll probably be ready to set some of the priorities in terms of helping us narrow down from the needs we've identified. Dot down to the top, um, again, three to five. Um, and then we'll put together some draft plans and bring it back to the board in, in May. Again, we'll be bringing it to committee meetings, but it would be our intention. So you'd have opportunities monthly to participate in this, but it would be. My hope that you could also be active participants in the stakeholder, um, meetings, those two evenings. So you could be sitting with parents and students as we go through the evening's activities. Next slide. I also wanted to share a tool. And again, I know this is, uh, too hard to read, but when people will be able to access this online. The next session we're going to be doing is where we're linking our existing attributes of our daring mission. With the first column is the needs that we've identified from our data profile. So, um, for one example, we've identified, um, a need, um, in the area of student achievement. For our students of color. That's one example that we knew from our equity policy, but that came out again in our profile data. We will be saying, where does that particular need fit according to our daring mission? And then when we go to try and generate that and link these needs to our mission as well as our vision for the future. We'll be saying, okay, so for that, what would the curriculum need to look like? What would the instruction need to look like? Getting it that culturally relevant pedagogy? Trying to make sure that our mission is linked to the data needs. That's going to be linked to our vision and then to our action plan. So this will have a series of activities for the staff to go through, um, in February. And then that would be mimicked by the board and stakeholders, uh, a few weeks after that. Next slide. Or that is the last slide. That is the last slide. Thank you. I couldn't remember if that was the last one. So again, amazing work being done. I will share with the board the link to the data profile I did back in the beginning of. December. Um, the information that was added was student grade distributions were added into the student learning. Segment as well as all of the perception data that we received from the parent, student and staff surveys. Right before winter break. So you have access to all of that. Any questions that you have?
Just, um, mention the data team that put together what you so aptly named a dissertation level. For the strategic planning team to use to digest all the information.
Yes. Um, so we have, um, four, um, uh. Members of the data team who have been working throughout the, actually, they started way back in August. And putting, pulling together a tall order of, um, our achievement data, our demographics data. Uh, our progress and process data. And then most recently coding all of the data that we received. That was open-ended questions. Um, so not only have they done the statistics and all the things on the numerical data. When we received, I think it was over 5,000 lines of comments from all the stakeholder groups. Together, we sat and decided how we wanted to do the coding categories. And then they, um. I think deciphered about 50 different codes and then coded every line of data. And, and was able to generate frequency data so that it was very clear to all of the stakeholder groups. What was the most, um, frequent comment? Which one? What category was it in? Was it about students? Was it about staff? It, it, it was really, really amazing. Um, and we have, uh, that team includes Lisa Davis. Thank you, Maggie. Thank you. Um.
Emmy Gutsmere and Andy Young.
Thank you very much. Yes. Um, and it was, again, amazing work.
It really was. It, it took this, um. Voluminous amount of data, some of it very subjective. That does, doesn't fit into neat graphs and categories and made it digestible so that. The people who were looking at it could actually use it. Otherwise, it would have been like trying to drink from a fire hose. So, um, I thought their work was really remarkable.
When I send you that link, I'll orient you to the pages where you can find that because it's. There's wonderful charts and graphs, but I think the thing that people found most engaging was reading the top. 20 or so, um, feedback statements that was coded from the open-ended data.
It, it takes a special kind of person to love and be able to make data understandable for other people. That, that, that much I know. Um, I actually like the fact that you're weaving these. Mission statements through everything we do. Cause then you can show that these are all actually actionable. And not just words on a, on a poster. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, we'll turn it over to Bryant next for a COVID-19 update.
Thank you. As, um, you probably heard from the student reports that mentioned COVID a lot and a lot of things happening with, you know, COVID since really. Winter break. So, um, I, I kind of. Incorporate some of the things that they talked about a few questions, um, and I'll answer any question. So obviously from winter break, there were a higher number of cases. You know, coming off of winter break. Um, and so again, we came back to school on January 10th. Um, about that time, um, coupled with the higher number of cases. There's also the change in the CDC is be an IDPH guidance. So, um. Working through all of that. And that biggest change really had to do with the 10-day quarantine reduced to five days, which. Also though, helped us in getting both our students and our staff back into the building sooner. The caveat for that five-day quarantine though, um, and again, when we say a five-day quarantine, it's really. It's almost seven days kind of, uh, of days. Day zero is the first day of symptoms starting or for asymptomatic. Testing, five-day quarantine. And then day six is the return date. So. It's weird how they start with day zero, but they count zero first and then they count and then you come back. Um, and I know the one student said you come back when you're symptom-free, but really the guidance says you come back when your symptoms are improving. Which again, you know, it's a judgment call. We err a little bit on the side of caution. You know, on that and fever-free for 24 hours. So that's, you know, um, when returned. So. We were working through all of that, you know, guidance with a higher positivity rate. Higher number of cases per hundred thousand. If, if you looked at our data that we were tracking for both of our area codes in Lake County. And it was a little overwhelming for the first couple of weeks, um, for our staff. A couple of things. Number one, tracking all of the cases in the building for students and staff, trying to get, uh, subs for all the, you know. Classes. But I think everybody did a great job of working together to try to make sure, you know, that got done. Also making sure as our student stated that students that were not in school were also being able to zoom in. Um, and so we've done a couple of things. Our students are able to zoom in. Our teachers also are able to teach. Remotely and try to, you know, keep the class going in cases where they're not, you know, in the. You know, in the room. So I think there was a lot of work being done by both buildings to really kind of keep our education going. One of the things through all of that, because a little bit of change in guidance too of, um, what can. The close contact piece of it, um, in that. The terms fully vaccinated and then getting a booster. And those terms are all getting, you know, kind of confusing for people. Um, so fully vaccinated still is considered. The two shots, if you had, um, you know, Pfizer or Moderna or the one J and J. Then the boosted is if you're eligible for the booster. And for those that are younger than 18. They're not eligible. Those 18 and over, which we do have students and then obviously our staff. Is that you're five months removed from your second shot and that you're eligible for the booster. And if you get the booster, you can't be considered a close contact to someone. You may be close to them, but you're not considered what is quote-unquote a close contact. I do know that people are starting to change their language on fully vaccinated and saying up-to-date. So up-to-date means that you might be up-to-date on what you are eligible to receive. So. I know that's just a lot of change in guidance, but we're trying to work through that. And so one of the things we did struggle with is. That, you know, with the number of cases, our, um, staff was trying to, um. Obviously remove students or staff that had tested positive, um, in a classroom, also contact trace back a couple of days. Um, and then remove anyone that needed to be, um, quarantined. But we had trouble contacting everybody that might have been, you know, close to a person, but they're not a close contact because they're. Either fully vaccinated or boosted. And we weren't able to contact everybody and let them know. Like we were kind of in the fall that they were close to somebody. And that's what. We're hope to get back to that, but we're still just a number of cases that we're getting. And so we're. We are working, you know, through all that and looking at our numbers. That I posted from mid-January and I looked today, positivity rate hasn't changed that much, but the number of cases per hundred thousand. For 60048 and 60061 have come down a lot. So, you know, I think being back in school helps. You know, I know our students said, you know, we've done some things. We've taken a little short pauses in our athletics. For a couple of days while we're trying to sort out like cases, what's, you know, what's going on in our program. And actually, I think that's helped in the long run because a, as some of the students said, it was hard maybe at that time, but they really want to get to. We're in regionals, we're in sectionals and we're going to state. And that was, you know, most important. So, um. So I, I applaud our nurses, our athletic directors, you know, kind of all working together on, um, that. So. I think that's our big COVID update. I'm, you know, I'm hoping again that our cases keep coming down and that. You know, we just keep i- improving. So.
And I think based on what you said, you're absolutely correct for our two main zip codes. The number of cases, uh, per hundred thousand. When you compare the 14-day and the seven-day, the seven days less than half of what it was. If you look at the 14 days. So I think, um, some cautious optimism with the rates falling. Um, and if I could just clarify, the CDC guidance changing the quarantine. For positive cases applies to everybody regardless of vaccination status.
Correct.
It is only the definition of close contact that is different based on the CDC definition.
Though the close contact only change for some people if they're 18 or over. So if I am, uh, 18 or over and I am eligible for the booster, but I did not get a booster. Then I would be considered a close contact and have to quarantine. Whereas before that new guidance, if I had both of my shots but was not boosted, it didn't matter. I was considered fully vaccinated and didn't have to quarantine.
Got it. And that's also CDC guidance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes. And I, I think, you know, the other thing, um, one of the other things that changed too, before the county and ID page. Also was asking for a confirmatory PCR test. And they changed that. So if you tested positive with a binax. Now or rapid antigen, that's enough to be positive. And that's what we got. There is no reason to go get. A confirmatory PCR test.
Great. And they have not changed the requirements. You don't test back in.
There is no.
Is the same.
Yeah, there is no requirement to test back in.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We have one donation to acknowledge this evening. Um, thank you to Barb and Bill Spickner. Who donated, um, an Armstrong Model 80 flute to Vernon Hills High School Finance Department. We also have one for your request. And it came to us from ABC 7 News, Chicago. And they requested access, um, to documentation of remote learning equipment reported as missing, damaged, broken, stolen. Or otherwise unavailable for use. Follow-up was by Bryant Kelly and the response was sent on January 13th, one day later. And that was all.
Okay. So, um, I think everybody received the, um, semi-annual review of closed session minutes in their board packet. My understanding is the recommendation is to keep those closed. Did everybody have a chance to review? Great. Then I'll be looking for a motion to approve. Thank you. The motion I'm asking for is the need for confidentiality still exists for all closed session minutes in the last review. On July 26, 2021. And those listed below, and they shall remain in the closed file, August 23rd, 2021. And October 25th, 2021.
Second.
Great. Well, roll call please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael. Drumkey.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Great. Motion passes. Um, and we will move on to our consent vote agenda. As I noted, these are all items that we discussed thoroughly in committee. Does anybody have any questions or, um, issues before I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
Bryant, there's one that was removed from here, correct? One policy?
No, that's, uh, that's a number four.
Oh, sorry. Second. Gotcha.
So.
Well, there it is.
Great.
Move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Roll call please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. And I will turn it over to Dr. Batson for the PMP Committee section of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Um, we have, uh, first up is the, um. Second reading and adoption for the board policies we reviewed last month, uh, both at the PMP Committee Meeting and at the Board. Meeting. Uh, so this was, this would apply for these first 30 here on the list. There's quite a few this. This, uh, season, so to speak. Uh, so this is for the second reading and the adoption.
There, there is one that was removed from this list.
Okay.
So, um, we went through a first reading on it. Um, it was policy 4165, which is actually a brand-new policy. It's board policy, um, 4165, which was Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors. So this is a brand-new one, um, that, um, we're supposed to adopt, but it says we need to adopt it by July 1st. Um, and in the policy, it states that once you adopt it by January 31st of each year. You need to make sure that you, um. You train all of your district employees about child sexual abuse and grooming behaviors by January 31st of each school year with materials. Um, and so Don brought it up at our last meeting and was questioning about January 31st. And there was another one that had a January 31st. Date of, um, uh, 2023. And talking to our attorneys, they said, if we adopted tonight. Then we would have to have all the training done in a week, but there really isn't the training, um, available, um, to be able to train. So he said, you need to have it adopted by July 1st, the policy. So. You can push it off another month, adopt it in February, which gives us the room to finish the training. That's not developed yet. And have, he said, that's probably the best thing to do.
Yeah. And that makes perfect sense. And someone will have that on their calendar to add it to the.
So it's already ready to go to add it back in on the second reading. So I just want to.
Just to be clear, it's not, that was pulled out. It's not on the agenda. So if anyone's looking at the agenda here, that is not part of this. So. And that was a great catch. Uh, especially if it doesn't have to be in, in place until July. So that's, that's good. Yeah. And thank you, Don, for being, um, taking such good care of us scrutinizing all these policies. And, uh, bringing things like that to our attention.
It's such exciting reading.
Okay. So we have these 30 policies, uh, for a second reading and adoption. So, uh, can I have a motion, please?
And move to adopt the, um, board policies for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion on these? Okay, roll call please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, we have a second group of, I believe, twenty-seven additional policies. This is just the first reading. We don't have to take any action on this tonight. But, uh, we first reviewed these, uh, in PNP and we'll probably go over them briefly again in, in PNP for next month. And then these will come up next month for a final reading. That is unless Don or anybody else finds something that we want to be concerned with, but
Nothing new.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so we'll, we'll hold those till next meeting.
If I could, before we move on, um, there was one addition to the board policies, um, that we just, um, adopted for, uh, second reading and adoption that changed the requirement, um, to be explicit about, uh, background check for the superintendent. And, um, I just wanted to confirm. It is now in our policy that it is our duty to do that specifically. And, uh, that was done, uh, prior to Dr. Herman's employment. So I just wanted to confirm that with that new policy, um, that that is something that has already been done.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Next up, uh, for the program of personnel is the memorandum of agreement, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Well, the students stole my, students stole my thunder again tonight. Um, so I know it says memorandum of agreement for workload. So this is a, the, the MOA with our teachers union to have our flexible day for Wednesdays. I think the students did a great job of talking about that. We talked about that also in committee. Um, and so this would be something that we would be looking to, um, take a vote on and move forward. We talked about it last week or two weeks ago in committee.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please? So moved.
I would adopt the memorandum of agreement as written.
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we had a letter to the board that came in last week or, uh, after our last meeting uh, that questioned the, um, the reasonableness of taking an extra five minutes of time away, uh, from every class period. And I, I can understand the frustration with that because our kids are behind. And here we're asking teachers to give up additional time. But as a former teacher, I was looking at that, uh, about how that would help instruction over time. At the beginning of any given class period, a teacher will find the students that they need to talk to. And the first several minutes of that class then is the teacher saying, I need to talk to you for a couple of minutes at the end of class. I need to talk to you. I need to talk to you. Particularly now where students are out as much as they are. And they might be zooming in, but they might have a technical glitch or they, uh, you know, something's happening at home. There's just so many things that are happening that teachers are literally juggling to try and find the time to, um, to get together with those kids. To me, if I could, at the beginning of every period, or I can email those students, say, meet me during that flex time. Uh, retest during that flex time. I'll be in this room offering this assessment because you all missed that assessment during that. That is a time saver, especially if you're thinking about having to do that at every class period. So, uh, I didn't want that comment to go without addressing it. So I understand your frustration. Uh, I don't, I don't recall who it was that wrote the letter, but, um, we all received it. We all read it. Uh, but I just wanted to address it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, especially knowing your background and, and, uh, um, as a professional, as a, as a teacher, um, that helps us understand that quite a bit. Um, and I agree. I think the students did a, did a great job of, um, explaining that. And I know there's a lot of, uh, excitement about that, so.
I'd like to comment though, uh, also as a parent, you know, as a parent of a current student. I think we're either buying into this kind of paradigm shift of mastery, moving to mastery as opposed to testing. And I, you know, I've seen it in my own student, my own son, who has really, um, embraced the idea of mastery. The teachers have embraced it. There are so many opportunities. And this is another way to say this is a time for you to come in to get the help that you need. We, you know, there's only a certain much time during the day and it seems like it would be a much more effective piece of time to, um, address the issues for those students. And my expectation as a parent, and I've told my son, I expect you to be at school. There's something you need to be working on, whether it's independently or it's with a teacher. So that comes from home. My expectation is he will be there and he will be doing something. So I, I think this goes hand in hand with the paradigm of mastery, moving towards really understanding as opposed to learning for a test. And it looks like it is being embraced as much by the students as it is by the staff. So I think
That's a really good comment. Because the parents, they're part of this. Get on the bus, go to school. There's plenty of extra resources. Take advantage of them.
And I, I also appreciate your comments, um, about moving towards mastery. I think that's a really important concept and not just learning to test, but moving towards mastery. And as a parent, I have also pointed out that instead of complaining that having to do projects is so difficult because nobody has the same time to meet. I expect that that time on Wednesdays be put to good use, not to sleeping late as, as a parent. So I think, you know, once again, uh, it's a partnership between the students, the teachers and the parents in terms of making, uh, this as useful as it was designed to be.
I mean, I read the letter as well and I felt that it could be seen that way as, oh, we're, we're taking five minutes away from instruction, but I really see this as a powerful use of time that has been scheduled. So it's something that you can plan for on Wednesdays. I know I'm going to address this with whichever, um, teacher. And it really follows, if we're moving towards mastery, it follows that shift.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We had a, um, motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, one more item on the agenda here is the employment of employees. These are items that, uh, have, uh, been brought to our, our attention after the, uh, Program of Personnel Committee earlier in the month. So these are, um, more, uh, recent, uh, employment changes, um, and adjustments, whatnot. Uh, can I have a motion in a second for this one?
I move to, uh, accept the employment of employees as noted.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I do. I noticed that, um, in an area that's sort of crucial, one of our nurses at Vernon Hills High School, uh, resigned effective January ninth. Is that going to be filled soon?
Yeah. So that's our, uh, our certified nursing assistant, um, in the office. So we still have our two nurses in there and this is the third position. Luckily, um, we had a, um, one of our, um, ESP support staff from Vernon Hills that retired um, back in the fall and she has been filling in masterfully. Mary Childers has been doing a great job in there every day, but we are working on trying to hire a permanent, but knowing the students and knowing the staff, she has really been very helpful to both casual and Diane Dantez in there, so.
Fantastic. Yeah, they were doing a
But we are
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, that concludes the Program of Personnel Committee.
Great. Done. Would you, uh, take it away for the FNF?
Okay, Facilities and Finance Committee, uh, met, um, two weeks ago where we discussed at some length. Two things that will be up for adoption tonight. One is the, um, replacement of the Claris story windows, those windows up there. And the other is the purchase of HVAC equipment. So, um, between Dan and Mark, they will walk us through that.
Yeah, uh, so for the windows, yep, those up right there. We had one bid, uh, for our project, which is slightly odd that we would move forward with one bid. Typically, we want multiple bids for any public project. However, when you have a case where you realize you don't quite have as many bids, when you get to the bid opening, you can do one of two things. You either open the bids or you don't. If you open the bids, because they're sealed, public bids, once you open that seal, you, then board action has to take place. Either the board accepts the lowest responsible responsive bidder or they reject all bids. Usually in the situation where if we don't have as many bids as we thought we were going to get, um, we may delay. So for instance, if our consultant, in this case, Tony Loden, said, you know, we had four companies come to the pre-bid. I talked to them all. They all said they were putting in a bid. I'm not sure where they are. We, we would often at that point say, you know what? We're just going to delay for whatever period of time and, um, and allow time for more because sometimes there's confusion or there's logistics, stuff happens. But in this case, from Tony's perspective, he just said, I don't, I don't anticipate we're going to get any more bids. The project is a little bit unique, not a very big job. And so a lot of the bigger companies that you would recognize, particularly in the county area, it's too small for them to really care about. Uh, so we said, okay, well, we knew what our estimate was about a hundred and eighty thousand. And so we said, well, let's open it and take a look. If it's very far off what our estimate was, we'll cross that bridge. If it's not, then we'll be all right. Uh, so we opened the bid and the bid was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven ninety-seven. So within ten thousand of what we were estimating and we felt that was pretty good, close enough. Um, and there's some allowances in there that may not all get used up. So we felt comfortable moving forward with this. Don't feel that the, the risk to rebid this is not worth, um, the chance that it could come in perhaps much higher. And the company they use, uh, Kroll, i- is a company they've used widely. Um, they, they trust them and do good work and honest, honest pay and everything like that. So we have the bid for approval, uh, to get that going. That'd be approval for Kroll Windows, for Kroll Window in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Vernon Hills Library Claris Story Window Replacement Bid for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar or one hundred and eighty-seven hundred and ninety-seven? Remove?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, we have not worked
It over a hundred and eighty-eight thousand is not a big deal. It's not a big but I get it.
I think, I mean.
And they're tall, too.
And the company has worked for the district in the past, has done other
My question. Great. Thank you.
Sorry, I interrupted.
My, my only question is when we do these types of window replacements and such, are there like, is there such a thing as a green window or something that might be?
You can get multiple colors if you
somewhat green. No, you know what?
I mean, the, the big, the biggest thing, well, I'll let him comment, but I'll, one, one thing would be the thermal value, like keeping the air temperature that we want inside, keeping it in, uh, not being so impacted by the air outside, which those have very, very low, if any.
Yes, these are fiberglass. This is a fiberglass unit and has very, very low thermal value, uh, but the windows that we are, are getting, um, will be, um, energy efficient.
That are more energy efficient than the ones that we have presently.
Anything would be more energy.
I think it's important that we identify areas where we, where we are upgrading our energy efficiency. Thank you for that question.
Are they also going to be opaque?
Yes.
Translucent?
Yes.
And not really quite green, but I guess.
Want to see it. You have to really want to see it, though.
Anything else? Okay, Carol, roll call.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, the next item is the pre-purchase of HVAC equipment. We have done that before where we saw the need. We knew that this was the time to purchase, even though we weren't going to be installing immediately.
Yep. Yeah. So lead time, lead time on the, on the equipment is significant. And so we want to get that moving before we get bids in for the rest of the project. So even let's say we were talking today, worst case scenario, we bid out the project and it's crazy high, too high for us to really be able to realistically do. We're not concerned about being able to cancel this contract or do that. The, the demand is so high for every piece of equipment right now. So yeah, so we've, we've going through train, which we've used, uh, several times for equipment. This is the HVAC, uh, equipment for the Fax Labs renovation for the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. This is purchased through a national co-op program. So it's that, the, the, all that information is already publicly bid. Uh, so this is what we can access in terms of a national, a national bid contract that complies with state laws. So.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the pre-purchase of HVAC equipment for the LHS Fax Lab renovation for fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Remove?
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
All right, motion passes.
Great. Nicely done. Thank you, Don. Okay, back over to you, Jim, for any update from IASB, please.
Nothing, um, specific to, um, the organization, but you did get, each one of you got this, uh, brochure tonight. Uh, so if you have trouble sleeping some night and you want something to read to put you to sleep, we'll read all about the new laws. Um, so that comes from our, just another service from our IASB organizations. That's it.
This is also on the website, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. I downloaded it yesterday.
Perfect. Okay. Kara, do we have any update for CEDO?
There's nothing at this time.
Okay, great. Um, any future agenda items?
Lisa Hassel, President.
Um, I'm actually really excited. We're going to be discussing in committee, um, the proposal to approve, um, a really fantastic performance management software tool. We'll discuss it in detail at committee, um, but I think it's going to be a major level up. Um, not just for the superintendent evaluation, which is part of our responsibilities as a board, but carrying the same procedure through to the rest of the district leadership team because although the superintendent is kind of where the book stops, the people on the district leadership team really carry a lot of that work. So having consistent performance evaluations, I think, um, really will be a, a great way, um, to move that process forward. So coming soon to a committee meeting near you.
And I would like to add how awesome our student presentations were tonight. That is time well spent both for them honing a skill uh, and for us to see what's happening inside the building from their perspective. Uh, I would strongly encourage that we repeat that type of, uh, interaction and that we have not just directors, but teachers talk about what's happening in their classes, students, like it would be great if that was just a regular part of every meeting.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, you have so many nice clubs even that you could have someone, you know, a club come and present what, what they're doing.
Yeah, and I failed to mention, you know, when I introduced Dr. K, um, it was my curiosity that started it, but it was definitely, um, Dr. Herman's and my collaboration that led to, um, inviting them. So I know, uh, that you'll be as, um, looking out for those opportunities to invite, uh, whether it's clubs or activities or whatever the initiatives are going on in the building. Um, I think the board has demonstrated that we really love hearing and seeing everything that's going on. Uh, there's so much work that's going on. Um, we just want to be able to celebrate it, so.
Lisa Hassel, President.
Okay. Great. Then, um, as I had noted, we are skipping number nine. There will be no executive session. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second.
Great. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool Carney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Great. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.